Okay. First time I ever done that.
I'm proud of you. You did well.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, call this meeting to order and have roll call?
Tess.
Here.
Bobby.
Here.
Bye.
Cindy Pratt, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Thank you, Lord, for this day. We pray for all those that are out traveling or out in the weather today, that they will be away from harm and that you will keep them safe and have a safe return home. We pray for all those who are less fortunate than us, that they may find joy in the blessings that they have and that they may have more blessings bestowed upon them. We pray for all of those in local government, state government, county government, that we will be honest and do what's best for all people, not what's best just for one person. We pray that you will always be by our side and guiding us in the direction we should be to make you be proud and joyful of our actions. Amen.
Amen. Cindy, would you lead us in that flag?
Sister. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I acknowledge that the agenda was properly posted in accordance to the Open Meeting Act.
Okay. Comments from the public? Seeing no public, no comments, we'll go down to item 6A, transfers of appropriations.
None.
None, okay. Item B, purchase orders and travel claims.
Now, okay, this is a blanket that on Buddy, he, I think I kinda had visited him about that.
Yes. He's wanting to be paid quarterly or...
Monthly, in the beginning of the month, not the end of the month, which services have been rendered now. And so instead of us just paying him at the end of when he completed the budget, we're paying him monthly. So, we just ran through January, but he wants February at the first of February, March at the first of March.
Is, can we do that legally?
I mean, services have been rend, I mean, he's completed his services.
Okay, gotcha, alright.
So, I would think yes, we should be able to do that.
Okay, so...
So, we're gonna run through one PO today?
Yes.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the payment of the purchase order.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Tess.
Aye.
Bobby.
Aye.
Bye.
Aye.
We need a date on there, too. Uh, yeah. Here, they're back here.
Did we, did we hide them?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I had to find them, but the jury were in here, so...
Yeah, gotcha.
We laughed at her, Scott laughed about Max's coffee cup, 'cause he said it was in here and he said, "He'd come in here and it'd be here," and then he'd be like, "I didn't want it to get broke, so I just brought it to y'all." I said, "Well, that's usually where it's stored anyways."
Darling, this was the one to drop it.
Hey, 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 now. Okay. Uh, was that?
That's a blanket.
And this is a blanket, so we only had the one purchase order, so we need a motion to approve. You...
I did the purchase orders.
You did the purchase orders, that's right. And we approved that. So, we are down to blanket purchase orders. We have one, Farmer's Grain for District 2.
I would move to approve the blanket purchase order.
Okay.
I'll second.
Dean, seconded, so it's been moved and seconded, uh, all in favor?
Tess.
Aye.
Bobby.
Aye.
Bye.
Aye.
Well... Almost signed it.
Habit, isn't it?
It is. Thank you. Now... Item D, monthly appropriations. Well, here we go.
Here you go.
Yeah. Dean, do you wanna look at District 2's? We don't have any new business duty, nothing.
No.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot. I put it on the next agenda, 'cause I remixed it, I apologize.
I, I need to give you guys a little update on, uh, 9-1-1. They are coming out and mandating that we go to this next gen.
Okay.
The next gen. I told Cindy that I've been going over there and we've been doing some interviewing and stuff.
Might be that is an item, an actual item on the agenda.
That'd be fine, okay. I didn't sign that.
Oh, no, you didn't, Max.
I'm sorry. I flipped your list, but I didn't sign. This one, now.
Um, oh, Bobby didn't sign that one.
Well, this one's signed.
There's two or three didn't sign.
I had to have that one changed, they had it wrong. Well, that, that, yeah. I just do that for my use, it doesn't say they have to have a...
Oh, okay.
Like Max doesn't have his one and sign his, I do that, 'cause I make him...
Hi.
I can make sure as well.
You just, okay, okay, well, when you get seven and it, they're just, we're not too busy, so we'll post stuff. I mean, well, not close, it'll be a little bit, but when you get seven... No, we're too busy. Okay, thank you, bye.
Oh, courthouse?
Yeah.
Oops. Wait now, there's another page.
Do what?
I think this one, no, no.
Ooh.
All the way, okay, no, there's another page, okay, two pages. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
It will, probably, yeah, of course. Okay, thank you.
We don't have a January for Jean Robbins, we've got a December one, but...
So, he...
Huh.
Bye. Um, can you come in for the Jean markers wrong or didn't mark hers or something? 'Cause they dated it January 29, Jean Robbins. Okay, thank you, bye-bye.
Oh, well, does she start up here?
Oh, is that what it is? Okay, that confused me, you're right. She's already got everything marked, doesn't she?
Oh, those are her holidays.
I gotcha. I couldn't, I thought, I was confused.
I'm with you, Cindy, I'm down here going, "There ain't nothing, there's not nothing on January," oh, my gosh. Do I need to sit in here and...
Yes, you do, you probably do.
If somebody doesn't get a paycheck, come back.
Hey, while you're here, we got another question on, uh...
It's on three over there.
It's right here.
When did you start hard, Lisa? Come up.
These pay increase.
The pay increase?
Yeah, because these say 131 to 19 to start them.
Oh, my gosh, I, she told me...
So, did you, that's what I wanted.
I, I did it and she had just said to make it from 10:50 to 11:50 and I assumed it was right away and I didn't realize it was for the next month. Um, oops.
So...
Do I, do I need to go ahead and change that back?
Was it real hard for him to do, I mean?
Um, I have to redo all of, it changes the entire highway. I'm, but if I need to change it, I need to change it. Do you want me to do that?
It's, I mean, he was doing it anyway. Pat was getting ready to give it to him before Pat left. And Pat just showed up and gave it to him, it's something he...
Okay, but my question, and I, that's, I guess, another deal, I didn't know if he could give raises.
According to, according to, when I talked to, uh, Steve upstairs, I says, "Can I do, give raises and do things?" And he said, "Yeah, you have all the powers," he says.
Okay, so he said you can give raises, okay.
And the only thing I can't do is, is massive amounts of equipment. I can go get, I can go get, uh, quotes, but I can't, I can't say, "Yeah, we're gonna do anything."
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my bad, I will, I will definitely check dates. Should Dean change the date on that and have him initial that the raise starts January 1st?
If that's the intent.
Yeah, I apologize for that, that's my mistake.
Change this up here.
Um, yeah.
If that's the intent.
If that's your intent, yeah.
Cindy, I'm, um, I'm missing something here, maybe... This one comes down. Total unappropriated, she has got 229,376,78, but then we only have one here that...
I think, does she break it out, so then?
So, I was gonna say, some of it doesn't have to be appropriated, is that right?
Well, I mean, there's, the rest of them should be somewhere, there should be more copies of this.
That's, I think we're missing those, because I looked through here and there's all the backup paperwork, but I, and I don't, you know, and it's just, you know...
'Cause he just has it, is that?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is these, these should be on a separate page.
Oh, 'cause those are cities and schools.
Yeah, I think it gets confused.
They are, they are on a different...
Yeah, those should be, I, I think she should put, I don't know, those should be on two different forms, 'cause this is, this is a 308. And not all of those, those shouldn't be on a 308.
No, 'cause they come through that on that report we get for cities and schools.
So, we're not gonna do 229, that's, we're only gonna do these, but I don't think she should have that all on one paper.
Okay.
You know, so that's how we, that's how we gotta make sure we balance. So, I don't know, the, yeah, these are not all, um...
I mean, I can ask Jennifer if, 'cause I, without me looking at like how, but I don't remember it being that, like you said, I don't think it's been like that in the past, has it?
No, she's always had two, two separate ones, because these shouldn't be on 308s.
Yeah, 'cause they're cities and schools.
Right.
Right.
She used to do that one deal and put them on 308 and just an FYI deal, but we didn't...
Approve.
We didn't...
But it was separated from the actual 308.
So, we knew what we wanted.
Okay, yes, I'll remember that now.
Mark did sign in the wrong place.
Mark did, yeah, so you'll just have to sign, sign over.
Somewhere?
Yeah, sign, find a place.
Get that out for sure last night.
Dean, you'll see on this, this one here, when it comes through, C-I-R-B, that's, that's where we get our money for the C-I-R-B plan. It's divided out, we each one getting like, uh, $18,000 this month, that goes into that.
Okay.
And that's, that's a special account and that's the money that, if we get that grant, that we've...
Yes.
Obligated out of that.
Yeah, it won't, that, you know, when we was telling you, when you come out of your M and O, it comes out of that account.
Comes out of C-R-B.
Yes, C-I-R-B, yeah.
C-B-R-I.
C-B-R-I, yeah.
Too many acronyms out there.
Oh, I know. And there's the same letters, just in different order.
Yes, yes.
The state, as, we got the C-I-R-B and then we got the C-B-R-I.
Oh, okay.
It's county bridges, C-B-R-I is county bridge improvements for, for roads. County and bridge improvements, and then one of them is road improvements for counties, you know, it's just...
County improvement, road and bridges.
Yeah, yeah, silly.
Did you, were you guys gonna mail Pete Lively's check, or is he gonna come over and pick it up?
Um, I don't remember, I'm thinking he was gonna come pick it up.
Well, I was thinking he was gonna do, too.
Okay.
Okay, on this bill here, where we canceled Stephen Beal, do we need to do anything? I mean, Scott signed that.
On the sales tax one, there's probably like 10 of them.
Do we need to do anything special here? Oh. I'm just asking, Cindy.
No, just turn that over, let's see, just turn that over. I mean, that would be different, but, yeah, I think we're gonna talk, they're gonna talk to him and explain that to him. But I think it's, you know, 'cause it would have came out...
Okay.
Oh, she reissued it, no, she, I'm sorry, she reissued, sorry, sorry.
Here's the page we're so in need of.
And we need to call Scott and have him come over and sign those.
There's where she deleted all those?
Yeah.
And then here's where the new one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to be...
I don't think, just leave those.
Or do you want, do you want me to change your total, 'cause cancelled?
What we're asking is, I think she's gonna pull those out, but we'll leave them in there for record to show that they were ran.
Yes, yeah, we need to retain these.
Yeah, retain it, so go ahead and sign them.
I'd go ahead and sign them.
But we'll need to have call Scott and have him come over to sign those.
You mean calling, so he can come over?
Yes. Yeah, it's big. Big, um, longevity pays this month.
On years?
Yeah, yeah, some of them, $700 a couple of them.
Wow, how many years is that?
14.
Wow, no.
Yeah, 14, that's $50.
$25 each?
No, we, we doubled it, remember?
No, it went to 2.
So, like, yeah.
That's right.
Come on, double check that.
Hi, Scott, it's Cindy. Um, the board was needing you to, if you were around, you're needing to come, uh, to the meeting, if you could.
Sign.
Okay, so he's, he's in Oklahoma City.
Uh, can Tim come over and sign?
Can Tim come over and sign?
Your payroll?
The payroll. Um, I don't know, well, it's on, it has to do with, um, Stephen Beal's payroll. Is there someone else who has authority to do that? Um, I don't know. Well, I mean, it's supposed to be signed before it ran, before the county commissioners can sign off on it. So, I don't know, I mean, I mean...
He needs, he needs authorized someone to come over and sign it.
Am I still signing it?
Yeah, well, so can he give someone authority to do that?
Mm-hmm, just back, I'm sorry.
Can he give, 'cause Tim worked, is, worked all night or whatever, can he give someone else authority to come and do that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, well, can you just give someone else authority to come and sign? Well, I don't know, I mean, do you want me to, let me put you on speaker, hold on just a moment, okay? He's questioning, you know, what they're signing, so, I mean...
Oh, it's your, uh, payroll vouchers, your warrants, um, the affidavits that, you know, that we, you sign on your payroll, so that we can make payroll.
Okay, I guess, that's not what I signed yesterday for Allen?
Yes, but we had to make some changes on one of your employees.
On Stephen?
Yes.
Okay, per the policy?
Yes.
On those 96 hours?
Yes, and the holiday pay, yes.
And the DCR payment.
And the DCR payment, yes.
Okay, well, let me see if I can get ahold, I'll just see if I can get ahold of Tim.
Okay, um...
Okay.
Okay, uh, or, yeah, or if you want someone else to come over, Christian or, or Kirsten or whoever.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
So, those we can't sign till they sign them.
So, I can't do my part?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, we never did motion on monthly appro, portion months.
No, huh, we're just down to that.
Okay, we've, we've looked at them now and signed them.
Yeah, I was just signing what you guys was doing, too. Okay, uh, we need a motion to approve monthly appropriations.
I'll make a motion to move, uh, to approve monthly appropriations.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Tess.
Aye.
Bobby.
Aye.
Bye.
Aye.
Okay, we're down to payroll. Okay, we're down to payroll.
That's, does everybody look at everything first?
Now, do I sign this? This has got Stephen Beal's two hundred dollars.
Oh, no, no.
So don't sign that.
Here, let's mark that one too.
Okay. You want?
Yeah, she probably needs to write on there canceled or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let Cindy, the official register.
'Cause these would be the ones that we, that we're gonna replace in there.
Yes. We need them to sign it before we sign off on it.
Right, right. Right.
Thank you.
We can't sign those.
Okay, um, that being said, would you hand me, um, a few of them, I've looked at a couple of them, thank you.
And you looked at, have you looked at the sheriffs?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Mindy must've got a longevity.
Yeah, she's been here, I think, fifteen years. Fifteen or sixteen.
Who has?
Mindy.
Mindy, oh. That's good.
I was talking about, Mindy's been here twenty-five years. And we were laughing and I said, "If I've been here twenty-five years, I'll be walking in looking like a ball lady because I'd have no hair left." Hey, we can meet those few last ones there and I'll have them all together.
That need a hole, must've had longevity. Scott Falkenberg had longevity. And so then she'll just have to notify the O P E H double and take Stephen off, right? So... You all need to sign these. So you got some big papers?
Uh, inventory, uh, I was gonna see what was on, how our inventory at my shop compared to the inventory over here to see whether I had any differences. We're getting ready to take that, run truck down to Elk City, uh, which...
That's what, March eighth, first?
Eighth, eighth to ninth, or something like that. Yeah.
Yeah, it's coming up quicker than you think.
Yeah, it's gonna be here.
Quicker than you think.
Didn't get around to get stuff done, but we have, that radiator's leaking on that truck and I don't know what we're gonna do about it, I don't wanna spend any money on it.
March eighth?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, we'll plug it up with that.
Pour full of pepper.
Pepper, does that work?
Yeah, it'll go, it'll all go right to the hole and stop it for a while.
I didn't know that.
A what?
Pepper.
Pour pepper in it.
Pepper? Somebody told me, well, they've seen a show on TV.
Hmm?
Floats, yeah, so that makes sense.
Where that hole is, that's, you know, Rick Bonin used to, had one, we'd say, "Oh yeah, gotta go get it in the can," right?
Crack an egg.
He could've, he could've bought a, a new radiator coil shield.
Like peppers he put in.
Hello? Hi Scott, yes. Okay, we don't have any idea how long it'll be, that's, we're, that's the only thing we lack.
Does someone else come sign it?
Can you not have Kirsten come over and sign it at, per your authorization? Or whoever's there? What the board was asking. Okay. That's okay, well, I'm glad you're there and not us, I don't wanna be driving in the city, are the roads bad? Yeah, okay, all right, well, be safe. All right, thank you, bye. He said, he would prefer that Tim look at it and sign it and he's on his way.
Okay, okay, that's fine, we'll take a short recess.
Yeah.
I'd move to take a short recess.
Recession. Yeah, I'll second.
Nine forty-one.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Bobbin?
Aye.
Bye?
Aye.
We are in recess.
What'd he say about the rooms?
Does that mean I have to quit signing?
He said, they're not real bad, but they're...
No, you don't have to quit signing.
See, let's start that over.
Okay, we're back in.
No.
Nope.
There we are.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, we need to come out of recess.
At 10:45, I make a motion to come out of recess and back into general session.
I second that motion.
Okay, Cindy Bobbitt, move to come out of recess. Dean White, seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Okay, we are out of recess and back into open meeting. Thank you, Tim, for coming over to sign that. I wasn't here when we talked about the other stuff.
Yeah.
Basically, we've got to... Stephen's got to give us an answer as to how we're going to interpret that. Thank you for bringing forward that we've got a contradiction in the handbook. We talked earlier about redoing the handbook for CDL license holders and safety sensitive and stuff, and we'll add that to the list that needs to be corrected.
Okay, and what is it your interpretation... What's the interpretation you're asking from the DA?
We're going to ask him whether... How we interpret the vacation law and whether... Questions been raised whether he worked after the first of the year and qualifies him for this next year's allotment of vacation days.
See, if he would... If he resigned and turned in his two weeks' notice, he gets all of his vacation... accrued vacation and comp time. So if he would have quit in December, he would have been paid the whatever 136 hours he would have had. But you're saying he worked in January, so it's 40 hours is all you can carry over, use it or lose it. And then you were paying him holiday, and the employee book says he has to work the day before and the day after. So, Tim, this is not up for debate today. We're going to turn this over to the district attorney for... And then we'll get back with you on it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for elegantly putting that. I never do...
No, you're fine.
...get that lined out. Okay. So that being said, we have this right here to changes in the payroll. We'll sign that now. Did he leave you a forwarding address, Cindy?
I think he left one with Alex, yes. He's out in Gomind.
Oh, he moved out to Gomind, okay.
I think he went to work with OSBR.
Whoops, two pages.
Just for the record, I'd like it stated that this needs to be turned over to district attorney for review because we, as a Board of County Commissioners, do not know the facts here, and we have to take care of the taxpayers' money. And that's the only reason this has been brought to our attention, and it's just something that needs to be looked into. And if we owe the... If we're told that the money is owed, then as always, we can make those changes with a special payroll. So just wanted that... So just wanted that on the record.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. That being said, we'll entertain a motion to approve payroll.
I would move to approve payroll, subject to review. But again, that...
With the DA's.
Yeah, with the DA, but I would approve what we've got today.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion's been made to approve the payroll as it stands stated today, with the exception that we may have an attorney... District attorney's interpretation later, and it may be... Have to be changed or amended later. And Dean White seconded that. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Payroll is approved. Item seven, adjournment.
I make a mo... You mean, you want call for a motion or what?
No, you go right ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Hess.
Aye.
Bobbitt.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Very good.